Call the meeting to order on Wednesday, October 9th. A new meeting, 2019, Dune City Council. You will call the meeting?
Certainly. Mayor Forsyth is asked and excused. Council President Meyer.
Present.
Councilor Susan Snell here. Councilor Duke Wells.
Here.
Councilor Tom Mallon.
Here.
Councilor Roger Orr.
Here.
And for the record, Councilor Montgomery called in just a few minutes ago. He's had an issue come up that is going to keep him away this evening. He is asked and excused.
Number one caller.
Actually, it wasn't Allen, it was John Allen. I know.
I'm the witness of the right of the United States of America. And I do represent the authority of the stands. One edition, unadmitted, individual, but liberty and justice.
A motion to approve the agenda. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
This motion passes unanimously. I need a motion for the consent agenda, approval of the consent agenda.
Subject to amended over the session.
Subject to the amended. Bill for the session. Subtle.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Does that include Jamie on profit loss?
It does. Well, it shouldn't, but it can. But if anybody has any questions about them, I'd be happy to try and answer them.
As a reconciliation.
Yeah, the reconciliation is only for two of the accounts. The credit card account doesn't come out in time to make the city council agenda.
Okay. I just want to clarify.
But the credit card account income is reflected on the receipts of the session, and we don't pay bills out of that account, so.
Announcements and correspondence.
Tell me to do it?
Yes, that would be great.
Because I do have an extra one. Our city meter reader, James McDonald, has begun conducting the annual meter reading throughout the city of those who have meters and use water under the Dune City Shared Domestic Water Supply Plan. He will do all he can, if we have your telephone number, to contact you ahead of time. And if we don't have your telephone number, please call us and let us know what that number is, so we can tell him to do that as well. Lane County leaders, including city council members, are invited to attend the Community Vitality and Natural Hazards Assets Opportunities and Resilience in Lane County, to be held on Friday, October 11th, beginning at 9:00 a.m. at the Lane County Public Service Building, Harris Hall in Eugene. I will not be able to attend, so if anybody wants to, we can certainly get you in touch with the people that are handling that.
Any volunteers for hearing none?
The Oregon Coastal Planners will meet at the Florence Best Western Pier Point Inn on Monday and Tuesday, October 14th and 15th. If interested, the RSVP is listed on the agenda. I believe that Rapunzel is going for a portion of one day, and a planning commissioner is going for a portion of the other day. But, you know, it's always nice to have as many years there as possible, because you never know what someone might focus in on and remember. The Elco Complete Count Committee, involving census 2020, will meet on Tuesday, October 17th, from 1:00 to 3:00, at the Elco office in Eugene, to discuss the upcoming census. Oregon Shake Out will take place on Tuesday, October 17th. The event, which is sponsored by the Oregon Office of Emergency Management, is intended to ensure all residents and businesses practice their earthquake survival techniques and plans at least once a year. To participate, go to shakeout.com and sign up. Or tomorrow more.
Do you believe that's Thursday, October 17th?
That's Tuesday?
Yes.
Thank you. Thursday, October 17th. That's what happens when you still have your September calendar hanging on you while in October. Crisis training will be provided at the Sayusla Valley Fire and Rescue Station 1 on October 15th through the 17th. While there is usually a fee for this course, this one is free, but registration is required and limited, so if you're interested. I've got on the agenda to contact city staff, but you actually need to contact Sayusla Valley Fire and Rescue or Westling Ambulances to make arrangements for registration. The Oregon Infrastructure Summit will be held at the Salem Convention Center on October 20th and 21st. Registration is required, and the city can provide more information for registration. The specific discussions will be around water and wastewater facilities. And then I received an email from Charter Communications, well, Spectrum, excuse me. Charter, locally known as Spectrum. Effective on or after November 12th, prices for Spectrum silver will increase by $5 to $97.49 a month, and Spectrum gold will increase by $5 to $117.49 a month. And furthermore, Charter will launch the Spectrum TV Sports Package, a new seven-channel sports tier, available for monthly subscription to new customers for $5 a month. Existing customers who currently receive these channels as part of their service will not be charged an additional fee for the new tier.
Thank you.
I believe that is all.
Is there any citizen input I'd like to discuss in the public hearing? You can sign up.
No one has signed up. Do you guys want to sign up for anything?
Presentation, teleconference with Waterway Attorney Laura Schroeder.
Yes, I received a call from, well, actually, I dropped them down, I guess, but Laura has had a family emergency and had to fly to California, so she is not available. She did send the memo, which you have now, I hope I give one to everyone. And her associate attorney, Jacob Wiley, is driving home in Portland right now, but said, feel free to call him if you have any questions. He says he'll pull over.
I don't think that should be as well.
But we can, in the future, arrange for another one. Laura, since your apologies. You never know what your kids are going to get into, right?
Yeah. Next assignment, successful governance of local officials being ethical and avoiding conflicts of interest. We arrange those on our own with you, but I can't get it at home.
You just can't.
I just, it doesn't, like, every time I try to input, it says, what, I'm wrong. It's always me.
Has it shown that I've completed it yet?
I didn't check today, I'm sorry. If you haven't taken the test, then no, it won't show this.
I took it.
So you did take the test. But you have, there are, well, we're on our, what is this, the third one or the fourth one now? This is the fourth one.
This is four.
So have you done four classes so far, or just the first one? Okay, so you've just done the first one.
Holy crap.
It's supposed to be one a month.
Ever did it work?
Wait, you didn't start. You were going to send it to me?
I did.
It might be easier just to get it.
We can try again. We'll try. Anybody else need a reminder what their passwords are, or anything?
Well, I'm going to set up time to come in here, because I just haven't had it.
That is another thing you can always do, when you have some time coming here. If Rapunzel is here, she can set you up. I don't know if anybody else can, but right now, but maybe Rapunzel will take care of that tomorrow or the next, next time.
A missing A-link is different than being the missing link, so.
Thank you for those words of wisdom. Looks like we all deserve a lunch detention here or something, I don't know.
I know, we want to.
Yeah, she's done.
I'm done. She's done all the hot, she's way ahead of you guys.
Whoa!
I did it all in one afternoon.
There's always an overachiever in the class.
Yes.
Yeah, typically a female.
Yeah, that's right.
That's why you made her sit all the way in by herself?
Yeah.
I don't want her to be catching. So we know who the valedictorian's going to be.
That's right.
Thank you all for your dedicated effort to getting that done. I very much appreciate it. So does CIS.
All right. Executive session?
Yes. Now, first, old business.
Oh, old business.
Now, I'm not sure where this is located in your packets. Hopefully behind an old business. I didn't have much time to do oversight of the packets this week, so you may have to flip to find it. The first page says, Oregon, Parks and Recreation tomorrow.
Yeah, I read that.
It looks like that. Basically, what it is, is the grant that we have applied for three years and finally were approved. It is to acquire the land for Rebecca's Trail, a connectivity trail to link the North Lake area of Dune City with the South Lake area of Dune City. The grant we applied for was $305,000, and we were awarded $301,750.
Say those numbers again, please.
We applied for $301,000, we applied for $305,000, and were awarded $301,750, provided you approve me signing the agreement tonight. And the reason we need to go into executive session is because I need to discuss with you who is going to do the negotiating. Our options are an attorney, or a Realtor, or the Realtor that represents them, who has been helping us get this grant. So, and we can talk about it here, we don't have to go into executive session unless you just want to, but it being that it's regarding negotiating real property, I do want to ask you what limits there are, and explain what we have so far, what we have discovered so far. The guidelines for negotiations.
So first, you want us to decide who's going to negotiate?
Well, it's going to be, I've got it on the agenda for when you come back from executive session. There are some things you need to know before you make that decision, and it's not, if I put it out there in the open, now we have undermined anybody's ability to negotiate.
So we need to go into executive session. So it's 6:12, we're adjourning this meeting temporarily while we go into executive session, and we'll be back as soon as we can to finish up. Actually, 6:35, we're meeting our legislators. And the item on the agenda is, I need a motion to consider designating a governing body to negotiate real property transactions.
I'm making a motion to have Desert Ray Clifton represent the city in those transactions with real property?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Unanimous? And we're going to do business separate from A. Item B is a resolution series 2019, number 14, 10-9, 2019, adopting standard operating procedures for processing flood plain development.
This was a mandate that came out of the FEMA audit, that we standard operating procedures for processing flood plain development comments. It has now gone through hundreds of pairs of eyes. Please don't make any changes, and ask go back through all of them again. Basically, this is how we will in-house handle people who come in to make application for building in a designated flood zone, a FEMA designated flood zone.
I need a motion to pass this resolution.
Yes, please.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Next item is resolution series 2019, number 14, of 10-9, 2019, approving Kyle David Hume's Eagle Scout project.
Just want to get started first by telling you that this would include a budget of approximately $3,000 for materials, including the bench that we had talked about before. Does not include any plaques or anything like that, just the bench.
And once again, we need a motion to pass this resolution?
Yes, and if you would, a separate motion for the budget of $3,000 for the project.
And that comes from where in that budget?
Part remittance. Street fund. Sorry.
I move to approve resolution series 2019, number 14.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Unanimous? And then we need a resolution toward, or?
A motion, just a motion to approve a budget of, whatever you think, I mean, $3,000 is what they're anticipating. I will try and, I will beg, borrow, steal from all of our friends and...
So do you want it to be, the motion to be in for that specific, is that what you're, are you suggesting?
That goes with $3,000, because that's what they anticipate the budget will be.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve.
Not more than $3,000.
Yeah, okay. I'll make a motion to approve a budget for this Eagle Scout project of no more than $3,000.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Again, pass unanimously. Replacement in the computer system with server system.
This is in your packet. I'm not asking for approval now, because I have not budgeted, but I am warning you that you may see that in a future budget. The idea I'm going to, finally solve some of the issues with the computers in the office by using the network.
So this is just information?
Right. Hopefully, it was $9,000 or something.
That's right.
I was trying to find it.
9/7/23.
This through Coast Computer?
I'm sorry?
Are you using Coast Computer?
No. No, I'm using the Coast Computer recommended that we use.
Yes.
It is a firm out of Eugene.
All right. It was in the packet, I think, before where we are now.
Okay. Oh, I got your firm. I better turn.
I remember seeing it.
I'm fine.
And now we're in consideration for performance of Silvers Lake Tester of Iris Prime. Thank you.
I remember that the water testers, we don't really have a limit of how many water testers are, there are. Oh, I'm sorry, Iris wants to be on the loaming. I've got him on the wrong lake. Sorry.
Right, and as I recall, we were going to have two separate testing groups.
Yes, right, and this one's for loaming. Iris for loaming, yeah. Sorry, that's my mistake.
I need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Again, is unanimous. And the next one is a resident request for resolution declaring that the deer populations have risen to levels that constitute a public nuisance.
In your packet, you'll find the Oregon Administrative Rules for the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife. This particular resident, the deer have actually, and it's a particular male deer that I think has a infirm. She had a wrought iron fence, it was a brand, it was a brand-new wrought iron fence, and this male deer squeezed through it, bent the bars out, and parks himself and poos all over her front porch. She has to step over him to go to work in the morning. And the first I know, the first time she had a run-in with him, she was in her car, and he wouldn't get out in the middle of the street, so she just kept edging for it and edging for it, and finally, she got to where she was nearly touching him, and he backed up, and he jammed, ran into the side of her car, so now she's got this dent in her door.
Oh, no.
On this deer. Then she said, she called, she went around, she went for a walk with the dogs, and she said she counted 60 deer in the neighborhood. So she called Fish and Wildlife, and they said, well, this is, if Dune City would declare the deer to be a nuisance, they would come over and do something about them.
Who would? Who was it? Who was going to do it?
That was the Fish and Wildlife.
And when you say that, does this mean they will thin the population, or just get rid of this one deer, or?
I have no idea. I think it's thin the population.
Okay.
And of course, ever since she brought this to me, I have only seen two deer in the whole neighborhood. I live in this neighborhood, and I know which deer she's talking about. That one's got an attitude. I call him Spike.
Spike.
Is there an alternative? I mean, I am not like many residents in this area, I'm not in favor of killing wildlife. And so, can they be relocated? Is there any other means of doing that?
I think it would be easier to have you relocated than to...
Thank you, Sheldon.
I'm just saying, they're saying in the stuff that we got from the state that they aren't going to relocate them, because it doesn't do any good.
Okay.
And that, it's the same way with the bears, trapping the bears, they euthanize them because you can take them hundreds of miles away, and they'll come back, or else they'll piss off the people in the other.
That's not my problem.
Well, I know. So you have to go through a process to have it be valid from the state to be able to take a deer away, by shooting it or euthanizing it, however they're...
Yeah.
And, you know, I'm not wild about that option either, other than within this last week, we had maybe a different spike, but a spike on our front porch, eating all of our plants. And we put bungee cords across every single entrance, and my Weber in front of one entrance, and chairs in front of it, and they still come through somehow and get in there and do that. And a BB in the butt doesn't seem to have much impact on them.
Okay, I understand. I wish that we had some sense of, I mean, is this going to be a massive cleaning out, or just a few? We don't know that.
What I might suggest is that you table the issue, and I will see if I can make arrangements for someone from Fish and Wildlife. Winkles? Him?
No.
Because I can ask him to go.
Well, here's what, before the new rules were passed, we got this message from League of Oregon Cities, which said, if the city has an ordinance declaring deer a nuisance, ODFW will conduct a study to determine if or how many deer should be culled from an area and implement a control plan. So that's like an initial, what the process might be?
Because I haven't seen as many as this lady says there are. I only see one or two at a time, so I don't think there's that many around. We've had 16 in our yard, so I know there's that many, but I haven't seen any more than that.
I would agree that we table this and see if we can get ahold of someone from there to come down and...
Explain how the process works.
Explain.
I'd be uncomfortable with that.
And give us a chance to think it through.
Be more information if we don't. Sounds great.
I was going to ask to table it also, but not so much for ODFW, but in caucus, and I don't know if a lot of people live up there and just see what their input is too.
That's good.
I will say that there is one person in that neighborhood, when I saw that he feeds the deer on a regular basis, I personally pulled him out and said, it is now illegal to do that in Dune City, and I will find him. And I don't know if he's still doing it or not, because he told me, if I want to feed him, I'm going to feed him anyway, because that's how they all react when I tell them they can't do something, and I'm going to find them.
And define feeding them. They come and eat my apples. I'm not giving them to them.
No, 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 he's actually, I mean, I have pictures of him with a deer eating out of his hand.
Oh, geez.
Yeah, so I think we're going to table this.
That's good.
Yeah, that's done.
You want to go for the record?
It seems like people have taken measures to protect their property.
You don't need to vote on it.
Just table it.
Yeah.
Now, we're moving into reports of Mayor Jackson, and I'd rather be here than where he is, and I don't have anything more to say about that. Community center report, Duke?
I'm going to do some moss removal off the kiosks out there, and a report of the forest growing in our back gutters, so I'm going to go clean the back gutters out. I think that's it.
Okay. Water quality report, you have these in your packet?
Yeah, they're older ones, I see, that we continue testing for water quality, we're getting more equipment as we speak, so we can fully sustain two teams.
Good.
Well, I could be my report, but I don't see it.
Public works, maintenance supervisor report.
Why claim my report?
It looks to me like you might have been playing cards with some of the agenda items, because it looked like you'd maybe shuffled them.
Well, like I said, I did not get a chance, they're not in any way, shape or form, and the order was supposed to be in line. I didn't get a chance to run quality control.
Jamie, that wasn't meant as a criticism.
Well, I'm just telling you, I mean, she's learning. We're trying, we're trying to learn.
Sheldon was trying to be funny.
Which is why I'm not on stage.
Okay, thank you.
Aaron?
I don't know what I got to report. We're just trying to get things done and ready for the water.
I will report anything, but you don't need to.
I'm good, I don't want to. We got some knocking stuff delivered today to do some work on woodland, fixing some drainage and did some work there. I think that's really kind of about it.
Are you still trimming, trimming, brushing?
Yeah, we need to be trimming roads, and he'll kind of do some of that, like I say, trying to get some drainage just taken care of.
Well, the counties go over trimming some, I think.
They're roads.
Power companies, and all that, I don't know. They're knocking stuff way back. We've got an awful lot that we need to do.
Oh, that was another thing, I guess I could ask now. I need to see about if we can get something set up for a fuel car or something, so I can get fuel in the bucket truck and not start using that, and if we could just get a car that we can use.
Have you had a chance to use a bucket truck?
Just in the house.
Just in the house.
Oh, I drove it up here. I use it to put up some signs and stuff.
How's the?
But I finally got it all kind of working, it's still got a little brake issue that I think I need to work on, but just with a little bit of driving, because it's sat so long, it seems to be...
Mechanically, it seems better.
Getting better. It's a nice truck. We put a whole new motor on it, got all the hydraulics working in the bucket, and yeah, it's pretty neat.
You mentioned a gas car, like a 24-hour kind of?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know whether we can get like a, I don't know, whether to get like a Pacific Pride or something car, or just a Chevron deal or something that we can, so we can keep track of it. Because I, my goal is, is I would rather kind of use that, because of the service boxes and everything on it, to put my tools and stuff in there, and using that to run around and do all the things I need to, and everything's in one thing, I can just get anything going.
Well, I personally, I see you all the time out driving your own rig a lot, and I remember when you first took this on, one of the stipulations was for us to cover the cost. Certainly don't want you to spend as much money on your pocket for fuel and stuff like that, so.
And I think that this is within Jamie's purview of, you know, so just go further and figure out what the best thing to do.
Yeah, I'd like to start getting that, and I'm...
Yeah, I'd like to start getting that, and then kind of make life a little bit better.
Well, and make it better for us too, I mean, you're not having to run home and back and...
Well, I do that, I'll get out somewhere, and I'll have stuff with me, then I don't have what I need, and I go back, and I get, and it's like...
So Jamie, he was saying that you need to have a gas car or something to be able to...
Oh, to get fuel, okay.
So, I'm sure that...
Can you just tell me what worked out?
Yeah, all right.
It won't happen until I get back, though.
That's fine.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Richard. Okay, apparently it wasn't even in your packet, so you now have it. There were fifteen permits issued in September, four mechanical, three electrical, two plumbing, two structural, one reopen structural permit, and one demolition permit. There are also two green permits issued. We have finally finished the office inventory. Thank you, Del, by the way, I'm glad you're here, because of some of the work that you did that helped make my life much easier than the work you did back in two thousand and six, so thank you so much.
I'm still up here, you're here.
Do I should have my bill now?
It was a nightmare, but we have made it, and it's almost to the point where I can now submit it to CIS, so we have outreach for agility, in the event of emergency, they will provide us replacements or pay the cost.
Agreed.
I send all the information that was requested by the auditor to the auditor and anticipate something back in early November. One of the larger issues facing the city this month has been numerous contractors and homeowners doing construction work without permits. And I want to ensure everyone is aware that before any ground disturbance of any kind in Dune City, you must come to Dune City, discuss the project, and just make, let us make sure that you are not within the shoreline zone, you're not within a riparian area, that you're not in anything near a water drainage or with slopes that require engineering before you do any work at all.
Jamie, I think that might be a, a good thing to put on our website.
Okay.
Agreed.
I have, well, we'll get that out.
Yeah, I'll write that too.
Most of the time, a permit will not be required, but when there is more than four thousand square feet disturbed, which isn't very much, really, for anything other than a garden, you can disturb up to four thousand square feet for your home garden, which, just as an example, is sixty-five feet by sixty-five feet, it's really not a very big area. If the slope on the property is greater than fifteen percent, you're, or you're located near a water source or any water drainage, or the natural drainage is changed in any way by your proposed project, you must do a stormwater management plan. And letters will be going out to contractors very soon in general, providing more information, this information and a copy of the code, so that we can make sure that these pre-development meetings take place. On that same note, you heard from an individual at the last city council meeting regarding that very issue. I did contact the city engineer, he was thankfully available, and came out, did the engineering, and wrote a report to the city of his recommendations of what the property owners should do in that issue. He also went down and spoke to Mr. Vang, and discussed what his concerns were. He wrote that report, I got the report, and I had issued a stop work order on both of the properties at that time. And it's, one of them has come off because he has finished what he needed to do. The other one is hiring a, what's the word, it's a dirt engineer, or a dirt engineer.
A dirty engineer? Geologist.
A geologist, thank you, to come out. Whatever, it's supposed to come out, and, and I am impressed upon him that he has to use the topo map that we have, because the ground has changed. There has been changes to the ground, so the engineer has to come out and look at the ground as it was before anybody disturbed it. And in so doing, it became very clear, you know, there are, there's a lot right up close to Clear Lake, and then the next lot, and one more lot below that. This is one that I got the first phone call on, that I issued the first stop work order on. And he came in and he presented his erosion control plan. I confirmed with the DEQ that that was a good mechanism, even though they didn't come out and look at it at the time, they just said, yes, that's something that we would expect to occur under certain circumstances. And then after hearing Mr. Vang, I, I put the stop work order on both of them, because those two parcels, something was being done. But now that, if you look at the whole topo for the whole area, this first lot has to be included in it too, and so I'm going to have to notify that property owner that no work will take place on that lot until they've given us an appropriate erosion settlement control plan, because that water, the way it's working right now, is coming down pretty, pretty strong. So we're working on that one, but there is a, right by your house, somebody doing something over your house that nobody knows about, except Richard. I guess saw a truck come in or something, and so I asked Quincy, who is with the forestry department, because there was a lot of logging going on, to go over and see if, ask him if he knew about it, and he didn't know about it, but he had the authority to go over there. So he went over there and looked at it, and he called me back, and he said, "They've cleared it, they've got a pad in, they've got power in, they've got a septic in." So I got checking, yeah, Land County issued a septic without consulting with us. So that's been taken care of now, Land County has adopted new procedures to make sure, sanitation department makes sure that we're in the loop on that. And, but the others, I had to issue a stop order, you put this on, I mean, Richard put the stop work order up, and I have written a letter to the property owner advising him that all work is to cease and to cease until...
Duke?
When Mr. Banks was in, it got my attention, and after the meeting, I went and I told Jamie I was going to go look into this, you know, I thought it was my job to do. And anyway, I went over there, I looked at that myself, and I talked with him, I went down to Mr. Banks, and looked and seen what he did, and I, my, my feeling is that we need, we should have a, a geotech go look at that thing. I think it would just, for, for Dune City's...
For our safety.
That's my opinion, that's, that's where I, I agree, and I'm not a geotech, but I think it would be good for us to, to do that to...
I drove.
We can't do anything about the trees that are gone and where they stand, that's done, you know, that's, that's already left, but I, I think it would show some good due diligence on our part, even to maybe, you know, if you guys go over and take a look at that yourselves, and...
I have, and I agree with you.
You know, I just think it...
I don't know if it's as bad as they're describing, but I can't say that it doesn't...
Yeah, I'm not going to say, this isn't the place for that, I just think we need to have a, a geotech person get in there and take a look at that.
I agree.
Okay.
For the good of the order, we're going to start with the best.
Well, I just have to say that we did some landscaping, and the deers came in and must not liked it, and they had a dance party all over the area that we just did last night, and I still like the deer, so...
All right. Bob?
Yeah, I have one, one item I'd just like to bring to the council's attention. I saw a lawn sign this morning that said, "Choose kindness," and I like the look of it, it's, it's, I'm Jensen, right at the corner.
Right across from our intern.
Yeah, exactly. And so I looked into it, and it is, apparently there are some cities that are adopting this spread kindness campaign, so they're kindness cities or something of that sort. And there is a program, an event, coming up on November third over in the Eugene area, which I'm going to go to, and then I may report back on kind of what this is all about, but a lovely idea of just promoting kindness. So I will, at the next meeting, this is, I will hopefully at the next meeting be able to report to the council on what I learned, and if it's something we want to pursue, we can look at it at that time.
And I think after Halloween and before Thanksgiving, it would be the perfect time.
Good.
Any other, you're good? Duke, any more?
I'm good.
Do we have a motion to adjourn? So moved.
Second.
It's done. At seven oh two.